This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting of July 5th, 2022. I'll call the order, please.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Here.
Councilmember Noak?
Here.
Councilmember Walchuck is excused. She is virtual, but per Open Meeting Act, she cannot participate. Or vote, I mean. And Mayor Walagora?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge.
The pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as all.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda this evening.
So moved.
For. Mayor Protem Johnson? Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noak?
Yes.
And Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Motion three.
Sorry. Yeah, I know here. I have a proposed modifications to the agenda, and it's basically just to add sixteen, return to open session, and seventeen adjourned, so we can leave today. Just for before we vote, just for the public and media knowledge, there won't be any, there won't be any action taken after we return to open session. That's worth.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noak?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
And Mayor Johnson?
Thank you. Any other modifications this evening? Okay, approval of the minutes for regular session of June 20th, 2022. Any issues or changes? Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. If you'd like to do so in your life here in the room, please come to the podium, state your name and address for our clerk's records, and begin.
Hello, dear council members. It's an honor to be here. My name is Amy Truth. My great parent, great grandparents came here from Norway back in the eighteen hundreds and settled here. And so I have a long history of this area. I was raised mostly in California. And California is a very health-conscious place. A lot of people do, well, healthy eating and healthy moving and stuff, you know what I mean? It's like it's health was very something that I learned to value. And someone said, surely you're not drinking the tap water, are you? And I say, like, yeah, what's wrong with tap water? And they're like, well, that's the next phase of your, your health. If you want to be healthy, you should not be drinking tap water. You need to be drinking purified water. So I thought that was the case. So I've been drinking, never drinking tap water. I'm sixty-three. I don't have health insurance. I don't have any health problems. I don't think that's because I'm not drinking the tap water, but it could be. Who knows? I don't know. But I did wanted to address the situation about the tap water, how I perceive it. I think we take in a lot of toxins, and the more toxins we take in, the greater risk of cancer and other diseases. Fluoride started because there wasn't fluoride in toothpaste, and a lot of people didn't go to the dentist. So that was one way of preventing tooth decay, and it worked. But now we have it in toothpaste. We have it when we're, we have our teeth cleaned, fluorides in that. So we do get fluoride. Also fluoride occurs naturally in the soil, in the water, and in foods naturally. So we are getting on a fluoride. So I feel like overdose of fluoride, even a small amount, can cause a lot of structural damage to the bones, osteoarthritis, a lot of things like that. And I have a concern that people who don't have money are exposing themselves more to that than the people who have money and can afford to have purified water. I don't feel that's really ethical. And also, well, I guess that's probably about it. What else did I want to say with regards to that? I just think it's controversial, needs to be examined, and people need to be as safe as they can be. Also, when I went to tour the water plant, I heard about how dangerous it is to put fluoride in the water, that they have to cover their bodies, they have to make sure they're not breathing the fumes. It's really, really toxic in a large amount, of course. But I'm just concerned that maybe people are getting too much fluoride from everything, from the soil, the water, the toothpaste, and the fluoridated water. Most major countries who are third world countries, some of them put fluoride in. We are the largest consumers of fluoride, fluoridated water in the whole world. And most countries like Scandinavian countries, developed countries, do not put fluoride in their water because they recognize the health concerns. And I feel like we should get on board with that and really take a heavy responsibility for the health and safety of our citizens, not just the people that can afford to take the fluoride out of their water. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. I'm honored to speak for you.
Okay, let's try this. Is it all right if I hand these out to you?
Thank you.
And this one did not come up. This is the area that we're going to get to. I wish there had been a red arrow on that. Okay, my name is Steve Hunter, owner of J&amp;S Auto Repair at the corner of Seventh and River, member of a blue collar workforce that built the city. I respectfully approach you, the city council members, regarding my being forced to join the DDA. They want my location to be included in their new boundaries and to benefit them by my paying extra taxes to spend as they see fit. I have not voted to join nor to pay extra taxes. This is a private group allowed by our city council to control and tax private citizens and businesses, which is illegal. What I gave you, this is regarding what I just handed you. Now, I did call because the letter that was sent to me said that if I had questions, to call, and no one bothered responding. I left the name that, where I left it said, "Angentry." I got nothing, and this gentleman said that it was, I think she was on vacation. So that might have been the explanation for that. But this, in this handout that I gave you, it says, "Neither members nor staff of the authority shall be obligated to answer or respond to questions posed or remarks made by a citizen addressing the authority. The authority shall not be obligated to consider or act upon any request made by a citizen addressing the authority." This smacks of dictatorship. No, they answer to no one, nor have to acknowledge anyone. This year it's 1.98 assessment, next year as they choose. You, the city council, by approval, are selling out our private citizens and businesses. We voted you in to watch out and protect our rights, not to sell us out. Since when can a group of citizens impose a tax on another group of citizens and force them to join their group? This is constitutionally illegal. Note, in their future plans, correct deterioration. I have been here for forty-two years and have kept my property clean and paid my taxes. Next, acquire and dispose of interest in real and personal property. This included the fact, if they want me out, under their plan, they can do a condemnation hearing on my property to force me out for as little money as they see fit. I feel this is an opportunity to discriminate against a businessman who has worked hard over the years, has provided jobs for others to support their families. I have never expected anyone to hand me free money. You have a jurisdiction to stop this now. Their control of private citizens not wanting to belong to this group. We vote, again, we voted you in to watch out for us, not sell us out. If I need an injunction to stop my being forced to belong to this group, I will consider pursuing legal assistance, and that is all I have to say.
Where, where, where did this, what is this? Where did this come from?
That is from their.
This is the DDA bylaws?
Correct.
I'm gonna, it says here that I don't have to. I'm just gonna address this really briefly, that, so, so this is very similar to our agenda for the city council meeting. And the reason why it says that is that means during the meeting. So if any of you walk up as public comment and you comment like you did and whoever else comes up, it just means at this meeting, no one at this, well, this is city council, but most authorities are the same, are obligated to respond to you and start a debate or dialogue of any kind. And I don't, for that is because we can only, we can only have dialogue and discussion and vote on things that are on the agenda. So if you come up, as you did, and DDA is not on our agenda tonight, so we can't get into a dialogue. But that's what that means. That doesn't mean that they don't have, that they don't answer to you as a citizen any more or less than the city council does. We just won't do it on this agenda at this meeting. I just wanted to kind of clarify.
It doesn't say that at a city council meeting or anything. That is in their bylaws. And I don't, like I said, I don't, I don't agree with that. I don't agree with them, anyone giving them authority, and no, no matter how far out it is, giving them authority to possibly condemn my property. Because if someday I ever get to retire, what interest would anyone have in buying a piece of property that is allowed possibly to be condemned?
Sure. Okay. I understand.
I have a major problem.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
And, and that's just, I guess, words from me as far as why I don't get in too much of a dialogue with anyone that comes up for public comment. But I, but we certainly do appreciate public comment at our meetings. Anyone else?
I basically was going to speak regarding the same matter. I did get some answers from another gentleman that I did not get previously. It was, "I respectfully approach you, the city council, regarding the DDA forcing us to belong and pay taxes, extra taxes, that we have not voted for." Once again, in there, there is the acquire and dispose of real and personal property. But that is still in there, and it can still be brought up legally in a court of law against a property owner if they want them out. It benefits them because they can have the say-so to go ahead with the condemnation hearings, henceforth leaving any citizen a sitting duck as they choose which property to go ahead and acquire. This is an underhanded way of getting a private citizen out, so they have a pocket park or anything as they see fit. At present time, if you read their laws, which you read, was never explained previously. So once you are in their boundaries, you're stuck. I don't have any other way of putting it. The people here that live there have kept their property up. They do not want to belong. I do not want to belong to the DDA. As a private citizen, I do not want to belong. I benefit nothing. We've paid for our property ourselves. We keep our property up. And you will note, the people that live on that street have all lived there for twenty-five, thirty-five years, second and third generation homeowners, not the ones across the street, the ones along the section as to where I spoke of last time. So I want you to seriously consider that. There's also another thing, that is if I was forced to belong to that, who would be paying an attorney bill if something happened? God forbid that it would ever happen. Let's say something happened downtown, such as murder, rape, et cetera, et cetera, and this person chose to come back and sue the city. The city council, the city, and they also chose to do the DDA, and if they put at all in there, that could include the property people, too. Anyway, thank you for your time. I appreciate it very much. And will we be receiving a notification that we are not included in that?
You'll have to address the DDA with that. So the, so this whole process goes through the DDA, state of Michigan, and then back to the city council. So we're willing and, and certainly appreciate everyone coming right now, voicing your opinion. But, but we, we won't be, the city council won't be a deciding factor in this for quite some time. It's still in the.
So in other words, it's still up in the air?
I wouldn't, I don't know if up in the air is the right.
I could make a comment.
Just briefly, yeah.
So I do know that the DDA Boundary Committee is in the process of removing all of those River Street properties, the residential properties out of that proposal.
Thank you for that. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it much. Janice Kell, K-E-L-L, six-two-one, River.
All right, thank you.
Sorry. Thank you.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else that's here?
Good evening, and thank you for taking the time to allow me. My mother lives on Richardson Street, and she's asked me to express my ideas and knowledge about the controversy that still seems to exist with fluoride. Instead of bringing a hazmat suit, I was gonna borrow one from the Village of Hillman, but they're so expensive, they don't have one, and Village of Hillman doesn't need it. It's my understanding that you have to have a hazmat suit to put something that's so good for people into the water that you have to buy five or six thousand dollars' worth. I'd like to pass that around. This is an article produced by Wacola in relationship to the Fluoride Action Network. You can look at it, "The National Institute of Environmental Health Science," published in 2017. "Fluoridated Water Lowers IQ of Children." For each one milligram per liter in fluoride in a pregnant woman's urine is associated with a four to five point drop in their IQ. Canadian researchers found problems, the science is there, look over the twelve. I do speak with some authority. This is the first book I wrote. This is called Minerals for the Genetic Code. It's published, and it's in the seventh or eighth edition. It's on every continent. This book was a limited book I wrote. It's called Minerals for Tumor Suppressing Genes. Fluoride is not part of getting rid of cancer, I promise you that. Everything said, write a book we can read, an Amishman's Handy Guide. This is everything you would find in a health food store, and fluoride is not mentioned in this book. Minerals for Acupuncture Meridian is going around pretty good. Fluoride is mentioned in this, but only if you have adequate iodine to protect you. This book here took me years to write. It's called The Chiropractor's Metabolomic Handbook of Everything Found in the Human Brain. There's four hundred and fifty-four distinct things that affects eleven thousand nine hundred of your genes, and fluoride is not a component of the human brain, and it's not part of the genetic code. I do not feel that as a board, you should be in the business of medicating people. If you wish to make this stuff go systemic, then have the dentist prescribe pills. Brushing your teeth and spitting it out has its pitfalls. Read the label. It says, "If you swallow this stuff, call 911." Adding it to the water, turning it systemic, is only adding to problems in an iodine endemic low area. And we have a lot of stuff in the water. I've been on the webpage. You had a chemical to keep the zebra muscle down that's not very good. My, last time I spoke to you, I give you a handout. I found more lead in the Hillman, in the drinking water at Alpena than Flint. But that's not why I'm here. I see that the fluoridation thing keeps kicking around. This was a problem. They had too much fluoride in the phosphorus industry, and they said, well, let's, let's sell it to people and put it in the, in the water, and somehow it keeps sticking around. I would not be in favor of ever fluoridating the drinking water. As a doctor of forty-one years in Hillman, I tell people, do not drink the city of Alpena water. It is fluoridated. You actually add aluminum sulfate to the water. That's not a good thing, but I'm not here to complain about the aluminum tonight, although I just did. And you have lead in the water. The county has a terrible PFOS problem. It's at your harbor. It's in Long Rapids. It's all around the Air Force. The water levels of this PFOS gets into people, and these people should not have any more fluoride in their body. The state of Michigan come out and says, "Do not use fluoride toothpaste. Do not use dental floss. Do not use Teflon coated frying pans." And I have to tell people that live in these areas with a filter, you can't go to a restaurant and drink a pop because it's fluoridated. It'll just add to it. The PFOS problem, if somebody give you a cup of PFOS, and this was done in China, it takes twenty-one years to get the PFOS out of your system. And all the little trace amounts of fluoride that you pick up here and there add to this problem, and it causes liver cancer, testicle cancer, messes up your thyroid, and worst of all, women lose their hair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff.
Well, he's got the handout, it's okay.
Yes. Anyone else? Anyone on the internet? All right. Thank you all very much. We'll move on with our agenda then. Tonight's consent agenda. A, bills to be allowed in the amount of six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents. B is a council appointment of Ricky Konecki to the Harbor Advisory Board for a three-year term expiring July 5th, 2025. C is a local government approval of off-premises tasting room license for Presquio Farm Cider to be located at 205 West Chisholm Street. D is the approval of noise variance request from Joe's Bar located at thirteen hundred Ford Avenue for Saturday, July 16th, 2022, and Saturday, August 6th, 2022, from 10:00 PM to 12:00 AM. The consent agenda is presented.
Councilmember Noak?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
And councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion three.
Thank you. And next we have a presentation. This is the Target Alpena Report. My malar is here, Director of Economic Development. Mike?
Okay, thank you for the opportunities, the time of year, two of these, two of these a year. I know my report is pretty much regional. I'm just gonna focus primarily on my comments to stuff happening within the city, okay? So kind of beginning with the grant program. So there was an opportunity that had arisen through the MADC to pursue grants, funding for projects that met very specific criteria. So we evaluated a lot of projects around the city and in Presqueal, for that matter, and looking for projects to include in this hundred million dollar grant program. When it was all said and done, there's a single project regionally that made sense for us to include in that application. Happens to be on the former Habitat site. Great project, brings badly needed housing, potentially badly needed daycare to our downtown, adds a forty thousand square foot building with retail in the lower level and second story apartments. So I'm really hopeful. We spent a lot of time, it took a considerable amount of time, just because I'm not a grant writer. You know, and we ask for five million dollars, you better do your homework. And so this is, this is a project that is in excess of ten million in cost, and it's a five million dollar ask from the MADC. If we don't get that money, this project does not go forward. So I'm very hopeful, and we should know something more. They said by later in July about how we scored, kind of, you know. I know that there's one other project that submitted not through Target for grant money here, and I just read today that they think that project got funded through a state line item. And so their request, I suspect, will not be necessary, or their ask won't even be considered at this point. And I do think within Region Three, which encompasses ten counties, I think there is altogether five requests for these funds. So I think we have a pretty decent chance, just because there wasn't a lot of, a lot of formal applications brought forward from this part of the state. So I'll also mention just briefly here, defense community infrastructure. The DUCIP program is something I've talked about the last two years. The city used that as a potential to help fund a Clearwall project. As you understand now, we got a gift, so we will not be submitting. So the time I wrote this, it was still a viable possibility, but I'm glad to report that Rachel was able to get that done without the DUCIP program. So we're gonna focus on the county for it. Commerce lots, so Target has two contiguous lots yet still available for sale. The two lots that we sold last year, there's a new business, Wolverine Ice in Town. They've started. They built a building back in there, and they're operating. I've seen some of their coolers and equipment sitting around in some of the stores around the community. I think we're just ramping it up now. But glad to see we've got some activity there. Jumping to the North Industrial Highway, as you all know, your property, you got five purchase agreements on four different parcels there. One of them, we're gonna be closing on pretty soon, associated with the boathouse. So I'm glad to finally see some activity back there after all these years. I know, I know Nathan's really excited about that, that project. The other project has to do with the fish and wildlife. And so if, I don't know if you recall, but back in last December, the Fish and Wildlife folks, the GSA, you know, the government accounting office, came through and said that, "We gotta have your proposals." They gave the developers literally two weeks to put together their proposals for this lease. They were due January 6th, right through the holidays. So their proposals for these lots were all submitted on January 6th. A letter last week went out to some of the developers, because I talked to them, just kind of talking what's happening. Letter went out to some of them, saying that they're six, nine months yet away from making a decision. So you're talking about a year and a half to figure out which of those three or four leases is gonna get accepted. So the prospects of it being built in twenty, it's possible it could commence in 2023, but I just don't know that it would possibly be built and done and ready. But anyway, I remain hopeful that it'll be one of the commerce lots, or one of the North Industrial Highway lots that is the ultimate site of that new facility. The DDA, a lot of talk about social district expansion is done. Downtown never has looked better in my mind. All the people today, just driving over here, every table's full outside, all the flowers, the baskets, it just looks wonderful. I'm so proud of how far we've come in the last decade. Social district expansion, of course, I said it's done. Bond expansion, obviously, it's a pretty hot topic, a lot of, a lot of interest, good and bad with respect to that issue. As Rachel pointed out, we had a committee meeting last week, decided to take the residential piece off of it just because it's putting too much heartburn for the residents, and so we did not want to do that to them. So our DDA board has not heard this yet, but you're hearing it today from me. We have a DDA meeting next week to talk about the removal of those residences from the expansion proposal. Parking plan development is underway. We're, it's a, it's a big project, and we expect to have something to city council before you arrange with our recommendations. And then with respect to the APC site, a piece of property that Target owns, right, a piece of property that we hold acquired and would eventually hopefully be able to build upon, that still processes is underway. The developer, who's been working with me for almost twelve months now on this project, is in the final phase. This is the, this is where the rubber really meets the road. He's spending a ton of money getting all the engineering done. This is a three-month process, electrical, plumbing, structural, all that stuff's being done right now, all that design work. It's really expensive. He expects that done in August. And then I, my, my expectation is that it will move forward, and it will reach a closing date in September. And then I think they'd like to probably start pushing, pushing some dirt around over there before the snow flies. So I remain hopeful that that project, that there's no last-minute issues that arise that would derail that project. I've already talked about the former Habitat site. It'd be wonderful to have that done there. Alpena Mark, Jeff Konjek, been working with him on a lot of different things here in the community. I don't know if you've noticed, but the Royal Light Cinema's got dumpsters sitting out in the street, and he's got, he's hired a contractor firm to come in there and finish the theater. I don't know what the timing is for that, but we, we have no, no theaters within Alpena County anywhere. And so I'm glad to see that he's got that going. I've already touched on fish and wildlife. Just now, just touching on kind of more, more broadly here, just real, real quick. The fifth-generation hangar, the CRTC is getting a fifth-generation hangar built next summer, 2023. They're gonna start construction of it, which means that F-22s, Raptors, a lot of the more, the most advanced aircraft that the military has will be able to train out of Alpena. So that's wonderful, because that'll just bring more people into our community and, and more opportunities. So for that, I'm excited. Starbucks and urgent cares, you all see, look pretty well ready, though. Looks like they're getting pretty close to opening. I don't know what the specific timing is here. And then I'll just lastly mention, one of the badly, there's so many things that we need as a community. One of the, one of them that's very badly needed is more daycare. And so we've got Target did a loan last week for somebody bought a building on the south end of town so that they could open up a sixty licensed daycare center there. So excited to, excited to see that. And then I'll just touch on two last things here. Housing, you know, Rachel and Mary Catherine have, have, have been the, the brainchildren behind the development of a Housing Authority Task Force. And so I serve on that, on that committee, and we're looking to raise money right now just to do a needs assessment. And once we have that needs assessment in hand, it's not a cheap, it's not a cheap document to produce. Once we have that in hand, then that's a tool that I could take to developers and say, here we go. This, this is an independent verification of the need that exists in our county. There's an opportunity here, and let's talk about how we might be able to work together to make that happen. And then I'll just, last, I'm just gonna mention real quickly, the Alpena Center Recycling Program. I know Cindy, it's a passion project for her. I sat in the kickoff meeting for that here a couple of weeks ago, that NUMCOG had organized, and it's really a great opportunity for this area to have a, have a recycling center here, even if it's out at the airport, just to get spur for economic activity development. Some other businesses I would expect to arise once we kind of get organized and settled and into a good flow there. So I think that's just looking, taking the long view of the world, I think it's a really good activity occurring out there. And then with that, I'd just say thank you for your support. I appreciate the extension of the agreement one more year. And I'll leave it at that. I'll just open the floor for questions, if there's anything you'd like to specifically ask me. I know you want to talk about Culligan Plaza. I get it. All right, thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mike. All right, next up is Culligan Plaza renovation and. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, let's do that. I'm moving to receiving files. Thank you, Mike.
Mayor Walagora? Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
And councilmember Noak?
Yes.
Motion three.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the Culligan Plaza renovation, and Steve Schultz, city engineer, is gonna start that off.
So we're gonna have a, a little presentation here with a couple of really cool models to show you of the, a proposed project at Culligan Plaza. But I kind of want to build you a little roadmap of kind of how we got here. We applied for the grant with a proposed project as we, we showed you a while back with just kind of an upgraded water feature fountain type thing and these kinds of things, but we didn't, didn't get the grant. We ended up getting, you know, some, some ARPA money, and so we, we elected to use some of that towards it, and council approved that. So now we have, we have the funding, and there was another piece to it that, that was always there, and it was the First Federal Foundation. And they actually with, kind of like this clean slate now, because we don't have a project from, from the grant, they offered to, you know, maybe they'd be interested in, in putting, in putting forth more funding if they could kind of help choose the water feature and maybe decide on something. if they could kind of help choose the water feature and maybe decide on something, something bigger and, you know, more of a centerpiece. And so we had with staff and a few individuals, um, have had quite a few meetings, uh, kind of talking about this whole design. And then we started to, uh, talk about incorporating possibly the Thunder Bay Arts Council project for the year into everything, um, as well as, uh, the foundation actually contacted, uh, a local builder. And you might know him, Mike Conjorski, he's here. He, he had some, some, a great project with the, with bridge and with the water tower across my hospital. And he had some interest in, in building something here. And we, we kind of heard out everybody's ideas. I think, I think they're great ideas and, uh, they both, um, built scale models. And we'd like to put them out here and you can kind of take a look at it. I've got, um, a model, um, that I've got drawn up in the computer as well. We can kind of take some, some, look at it from different angles. But I also wanted to give them a chance to kind of describe their pieces and, and how they incorporate together and what it all kind of means, um, together. So I'm going to have Charlie and I are going to grab the models here. We'll put them out and then I'll, I'll, Mike come up and kind of describe the, you know, his side of the project and, and what we're, what he's aiming for. So if you can imagine, this isn't the true size of Culligan Plaza, but this is about how they would be, um, oriented, we're thinking. Charlie's got the streets there. So Second Avenue over there. Matt, you're basically sitting where Royal Night Cinema is.
Correct.
Okay. There's Chisholm. This would be in the back corner, seeing, seeing this is probably the, the bank here. So kind of give you a visual for size anyway. Measuring, this would actually be more back here as far as a visual to kind of look at everything. So what we wanted to get up there and you could kind of take a look at that and I'll let, uh, I'll let Mike go first. Autumn is the, the artist. She did this other piece and she can explain that a little bit. But this is kind of the, the brainchild of our, our group.
So anyway, um, Steve misspoke a little bit. I am not building it.
But you're a local builder, right?
Okay.
Are you a local builder?
Okay. So anyway, um, uh, Marty called me and just wanted me to throw some ideas in my brain and just try to figure out what I was visioning for Culligan Plaza. And so, I mean, a fountain is wonderful, waterfalls, whatever, yeah, but I just visioned something different. And of course, that's what I, so this is a tower that's anywhere from fifty to sixty feet tall. And it is only about fifty-two inches in diameter. So it's very small, smaller than this table that goes up that long, that height. So in doing so, I wanted to make like a history form of El pena off this, off this piece. So the timbers, for example, that I'm using, the wings, that's a historical area where I'm hoping that we can make plaques of some kind on each side to show the history of El pena, when it was founded in eighteen hundred, how it was established with the, with, uh, the wood industry, how it went into more industrial with here on Portland Cement Fletcher Paper Company, Besser Corporation, Army and et cetera. And so what we do is explain all those steps through the process in those little pockets that copper roof is covering. And that's about twelve foot tall, that area. And you see at this end where you see that like a stump or like a log of some kind. What I want to do is the timber that we have in our property is approximately two hundred years old. And so I want to cut the white pine off the property and simply take that piece of wood and mark the history of El pena on one side from when it was established in eighteen thirty-five or whatever. And maybe in eighteen forties, how it was a booming industry of forestry and how in the late eighteen hundreds it returned into more of a, you know, whatever. But just step through Besser and here in Portland Cement and all those kind of things. And then the other side, but this tree will be old enough to be able to put a stake in the side of that. And that tree lived before El pena even started. That's what's so unique about it, you know what I mean? So it, it'll just show the whole history and the backside will have the same thing, but it'll show the future. And they'll continue in the future. And the tower is totally glass. The first twelve feet to fifteen is going to be more steel and stone. And then there's just very fine steel pillars that will hold the glass in with a copper roof on the top. And that'll be lit up twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. And I have people in the community I've talked to that want to work with the community, with the city to actually create this. And I have a list of names, like the Zans want to be part of the foundation. L N S want to donate all the concrete. Superior Fab wants to build it, but they do have to get paid. Besser Corporation, they want to donate all the metal for the building or for the tower. Scott Stevens wants to bend all the copper and everything, create that. Omega Electric, Ryan wants to donate everything for the wiring of the system, light it up. So it's very simple for the city. Simply if it's the Fourth of July and they want to make a red, white and blue, that'll light up red, white and blue. Or if it's cancer awareness, it'll write up pink, you know, but it'll be a tower that'll be totally lit in our city all the time. And then of course, ninety percent of the time it'll probably be just white, you know? So, and then we have El pena Glass that'll help design the glass, install it. And then my family, we want to be part of the woodwork part, you know? We want to try to possibly, you know, be able to cut the trees off our property and cut those twenty-four by twenty-four timbers to hold that pillars up. But way I have it engineered and I'll just, I'll actually, if it passes or something that's, it's the community or the, uh, the city's interested, I'll take the time to draw it now. And then of course, it'll go on to an engineer to make sure it's proper for wind gusts and all that kind of stuff. If it's something that we are interested, but I haven't went any farther than this because, you know, if it don't, you know why, you know what I mean? So, but if it does go farther, I'll take the time to make a drawing, what I'm seeing in my brain. And then we'll pass it on to an engineer to actually try to make that as close as possible, what I'm visioning. And then, and then with you, I wanted to show you this, but you know, we talked about the water, you know? I have a bunch of old shale stone like this. Okay. See how old it looks? Okay. So I just want to give that to them and show you what I'm visioning for the backdrop, more of an older look, you know? Still have the water, but have something about ten to twelve feet tall. So you can still see it through those pockets. So you'll still see it. And then on the top, so I'm, I'm, I'm visioning like two pillars of stone with the old shale. And then take a huge one that's probably twelve feet long or eight feet long and top it and somehow run that water so it runs through it and you can vision right through it. So it keeps that whole part open and very vibrant. So this is just some notes I wrote down that I talked to some people that if you want to have them and then just the pictures of the, what I'm visioning, but I didn't take the time to make a model of them. So that's, that's what I got. But there's other people I could talk to. But I just want to, uh, say, um, I want to be a part of it, but I don't want to be in charge of it, you know? That's all I, so, so I'll be a part of it, but not the leader, you know, to create it. So, all right.
Thank you, Mike. Thanks, Mike.
So that, that tower could be lit up Michigan State green.
All the time.
El pena Community College, whatever color.
The Irish should be happy to be up in this area as well.
Let's hold on to those for now. Then.
So, so then, I'm sorry I had to step out, but, um, you know, we've been, so you've seen these, these droplets as part of the Thunder Bay Arts Council proposed sculpture. And so, um, you know, it was such a great opportunity with the, um, the water feature and, and just trying to integrate that somehow into the plaza. So with that, we'll let Autumn get up and explain her vision.
Hi, my name's Autumn Belton and I have been an artist for, um, about thirty years doing all types of, uh, uh, sculpture. And, uh, I, I have made, um, lots of stone carvings and I work for the Parade Company in Detroit. And, um, I, uh, just love doing artwork and I'm very happy to be a part of this if you guys choose to do it. But, uh, Tim approached me with, um, for a, uh, sculpture that has a water theme. And I came up with this original area right here, um, for this, a sculpture around the city somewhere. And then we had the idea of actually putting it in, in the plaza, in the Culligan Plaza. And I was thrilled and, um, I'm, I'm just, just thrilled to death to do it. So, uh, this is all limestone pieces that it's Indiana limestone because, uh, that is carvable. Some of the limestone in the area is not carvable. So, and, um, this, of course, like Mike said, we can make it any type of stone, the surroundings here. Uh, I chose this color because Lake Huron is that color sometimes. It's just like, wow, so beautiful. And, um, so the fountain could be in any, any type of form. And any type of, I mean, the rock, the shale that Mike was talking about, we could use that. Or we could use the big boulders from Elmer's or, um, up in Roger City, right? What, what's the name of that town, that?
Calcyde.
Oh, Calcyde.
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 Okay. So, uh, that, this is my idea. This is about twenty-seven feet wide. And right here is a, a six foot person. So it kind of gives you an idea what, um, what the, the area would be for the sculpture. And, um, so any questions at all?
Not particularly. I, I don't, I certainly don't have questions. Um, I did earlier when I talked to Rachel. I, um, so I'll, I'll just start, I guess, um, because I think what we're doing here is we're, we're looking to just get some direction as to whether everybody here is ready to proceed with something of this nature. And, um, and I told Rachel this morning that there was nothing on the agenda. There are no pictures to look at. And so I just kind of freak out sometimes when I get surprised and don't. But someone's going to. But, but, um, I, yeah, I absolutely, I, I love everything about it. Glass makes me a little, a little nervous sometimes, but, um, but I'll just, you know, proceed with whomever says that it's going to be cool. But I really like it. I like the wood. I like the, I like the brass. I like the rocks. I've liked your sculpture idea right from the beginning when we saw it, maybe last year or whenever that was.
We're going to incorporate the same stone for Mike's, uh, Mike's, uh, sculpture as we do this. So it would tie in more.
Right.
Look, you know, uniform.
So I guess the.
Yeah, more harmony.
I guess the, maybe, maybe the question would remain as, so the, so the, this planning group, the rest of the park will just be remained relatively flat with some seating areas and things like that. These will be kind of in the corners and then the rest will be kind of what we're looking at there with some tables and whatnot.
Would you like to show them where the tree woke up?
I asked early on.
You know, this kind of just, it's basically what we had before, um, minus the, the main feature. So, um, you know, I think it works. I know part of the idea that we had talked about from the beginning was, you know, you're seeing through the tower structure and you're seeing the water feature in back of it. You know, from a, from a street level, you can see through all this and see everything. And I know that was one thing that, that, uh, we had talked about early on that we wanted to make sure of. And I can just pop the Christmas tree in here real quick.
Amazing.
Yeah, right? So that's kind of how we, I mean, we, we think it'll look. You know, I don't think the, from, from all angles, except, you know, this angle, you don't, you know, you don't see the tree very well here, but you're around the corner from the sides. The tree's very visible. And I think with this lit up in a green and red, the tower at the same time, the tree is there. You know, for that part of the season, I, I think it works. So that's.
Yeah, that's, um, that's awesome. Um, and again, I guess with all lights that we've, we've kind of had some growing pains with LEDs over the years. So I guess I would just caution that it's something that perhaps can be either dimmable or, or isn't too, too.
Yeah. I mean, you, there's all kinds of things we can do with the glass as well. I mean, I, I assume it would be a safety glass and not just, you know, and then you might have some sort of a, uh, you know, UV protectant to it that you're not going to, you know, I mean, I think you'd want that anyway because you don't want to see wires and things in there. You would just want to see the lights.
Yeah.
So I mean, there, yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of design that has to go into this and, and everybody involved is professionals in their field. And, you know, they, they, they'll take their vision, I think, from Mike and, and from Autumn and then they're going to, they're going to make it.
Yeah.
Make it pretty amazing.
Yeah, I think it's very cool. Has any issues with it?
Holdable water down there for events when we need it, all, all the electrical we need for any, any event that's held there. They'll be able to plug in. The lights that are currently there, um, we plan on putting them in the entry to the marina. And the fountain, and we've talked about this, we hope that the, we put the fountain that's currently there, the, the piece in the current fountain, that we will re, we will reserve that and put it somewhere in the city. We discussed maybe at the boat harbor.
And I just wanted to point out, um, you know, we've been looking at this renovation for a little while because the infrastructure with this and the water feature is very dated. And so it's just kind of, um, hanging on and we don't want to put a whole lot more money into it, knowing that we could, um, renovate this. I did want to point out, and I'm sorry, and I don't know if you said First Federal Foundation is also a partner in this and, you know, providing a key funding source specifically for the, um, a, a more enhanced water feature than what we have there. And I don't know, um, we have Marty and Mike here. I didn't know if you wanted to say anything, but I don't want to put you on the spot.
Well, I mean, I, I'll, I'll speak in, I can support you on speaking as well, but I just know that, you know, Marty and I have a history at the bank. A lot of people thought that Culligan Plaza belonged to First Federal. And so when, when, you know, with my involvement with the D D A, being aware that there's a refresh of Culligan Plaza coming, our foundation talked about, you know, now that the bank is gone, we still want to be able to retain our name somehow in this community as part of. We were here for sixty years. And so we just thought, maybe we step up in a big way and do something that's really meaningful. Instead of just putting another fountain in the middle of the plaza, not that that would have happened, but we, we really wanted to create something more dramatic. And, and so our foundation talked about it. Uh, we actually took formal action last being to approve a hundred thousand dollars toward this project, which is a lot for us as a foundation. And, um, I know that Marty had reached out to Mike to get his ideas and, you know, and so this whole thing has kind of evolved to where it is today. But, I mean, in my mind, this is, this is another community in Northern Michigan that's got anything like that in it. And that to me would just probably make it, I, my vision was, I want a kind of place where kids want to take their senior pictures, wedding pictures, things like that. I think you achieved it with that. And so, um, I'm excited and I think it's just another great element to our community. If, if it's done and if it's approved, I think it just makes our community again, it's just more attractive to the community. So that's, I'll say that from the foundation perspective and then maybe Marty messages I did as well.
You, you covered it, Mike. I think, I think I'm older, so I'll go back a little further. The foundation was formed when we, we basically, uh, formed the bank into a stock entity and sold the stock. So we retained part of the value of First Federal on behalf of the old savings and loan customers, which was, as you know, was, was member owned. So, uh, so to, to me, this is still something that can represent their investment. If there's any of us left alive that were part of the old savings and loan savings before, what, ninety-four? I think we converted partially and then two thousand and five, we, we completed, converted to a NESTA corporation anyhow. But, but I'm fully supportive. I think it's a great idea downtown and glad that if we can work together with the city and everyone else and get some great artists obviously involved, so.
So we're really just looking for, um, a consensus to move forward with this. We didn't want to go any further, um, before we brought this before you and catch your feedback.
Sure. Um, it's fine. I don't know that anyone's opposed.
My, my thought was, when's the start date?
No, I mean, this is a fantastic idea. I love how we're incorporating a lot of different elements that really represent and mean something to El pena. I love the history. Noah is always being a history buff. I love the, the little guy that's six foot tall and wearing a Notre Dame hat within the models thing. So I think this is fantastic and I have it myself. I think this is a great idea to move forward, so.
Great. Sounds like a havoc, the consensus.
That is a move forward by consensus.
And now thank you, Marty, Mike and Autumn. Mike, really appreciate all of that work. It's very cool. And Steve?
He was amazing on that, yeah, by the way.
During the meeting. During the meetings.
Yeah.
All right. Awesome. We will move on then. Reporter officers, we have the second reading of ordinance 22-479, which amends the city of Alpena zoning map.
Consistent with council policy, this would not be read again unless any of the individual members would like me to read it again. But just real quick, this is 933 Lockwood and it would rezone it from R2 to RT, simply legally make it a duplex. It's been a duplex for a while, but this would legally make it so.
I move we approve ordinance 22-479.
Second.
Mayor Portem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
And Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Motion to carry.
Next is new business. A is Waterways Grant Agreement and Resolution. Shannon Smolinski, Harbor Master, is she here or you're covering?
I'll stand in. She, basically what this is, is just we're, we're asking for, to sign the resolution for the grant, to sign the grant agreement. Says, I think it has your name, Matt, but we can also approve Rachel to sign it. It's just a representative of the city. Might be even easier that way. But basically, that's all we're asking for is just approval of those two things. You know, they were approved once for the grant application, but now we're, you know, we're approving the agreement itself. And then the, the resolution that says we're actually going to put our match forward.
Okay. And for those that didn't see the packet, this is, this is grant funding for the permanent docks or the?
Docks.
The docks?
The ones, it's, it's the ones that are U-shaped, that are in really bad shape, that they have vegetation growing out of them.
Right.
Right down by.
The one U-shaped and then the other ones as well. Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought you described somewhere in here that they were the, oh, fixed dock.
Fixed docks, yeah.
Fixed docks. Okay. And I would, I would refer it in the motion or perhaps a separate motion that Rachel have the authority to sign it because it's grants and it'll, she'll be kind of watching that whole thing as it goes, if you guys are okay with that.
This is two motions, right?
Is it? Should be two or?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
You're taking the lead.
No, I'm just asking. I move we approve the Waterway Grant Agreement.
Agreement Resolution.
Right.
No.
It has a number on it.
A number of resolutions.
Oh, gotcha.
Yep.
Gotcha. Okay. Yeah. I'm sorry.
With, you know, nominating Rachel as the signature.
And nominate Rachel, City Manager Rachel to sign.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm supporting that.
So that was just one motion? Was that two?
That was one.
It was increased.
Okay.
She amended the first.
Okay.
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
And Mayor Portem Johnson?
Yes.
Motion to carry.
And the resolution was to approve that we were paying the 150. Okay.
I think the motion should state that that 156,340 is to match the 150 state grant.
So I move we adopt the resolution that the city pay the sum of 156,340, $40. No sense. And, and Rachel will be the signature again.
Supporting it.
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Mayor Portem Johnson?
Yes.
And Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion to carry.
Thank you. Next is a resolution authorizing social district permit applications. And Ann Gentry, I'm assuming she, is she virtual?
No, no, Mike's going to.
Oh, Mike's going to do that?
Still. So Ann has prepared a, I guess I have to, I have to read the memo. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay, so.
At least summarize it.
It's short.
Okay, I could probably buzz through this pretty quickly here. So in May of 2021, Alpena Council passed a resolution which recommended that eligible liquor licenses are contiguous to the downtown Alpena Social District be considered for approval of the social district permit by Michigan Liquor Control Commission. And that memo lists the businesses who are eligible for a social district permit were included for approval. So now hence a year later, somebody comes along and wants, wants to be added to the social district. Problem is now you have to prepare a resolution to do that. So what we're seeking here through this, through this resolution is to take action today that will allow us to directly, if they're eligible, go directly to, without having to come before the city council, to pursue a resolution specific to them. So that in a nutshell is what the resolution behind the memo says.
I move we adopt resolution 2022-13.
If I'm understanding it right, I want to make sure everybody else understands it right. That this is just, this is just used to allow businesses that are already inside the current district. So not, not, not expanding the district to those businesses, just accepting them as they become inside the current district.
That's correct. Yep.
Sure. Thank you.
Mayor Portem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
And Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Motion to carry.
Getting in the regular.
I move we adjourn to closed session to discuss the pending and/or threatened litigation regarding Alpena Bio Refinery, Shiboid and Cement and Lovey Incorporated versus the City of Alpena, and Rashii Lodging versus the City of Alpena Tax Tribunal Appeal.
Second.
Mayor Portem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
And Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Motion to carry.
Good catching.
I had them hide this.
He had them hide this, huh?
Because I didn't want it to end up in the paper.
This conference will now be recorded.
We can't adjourn until you do. Second and third.
So automatic anymore.
Yep. All set up the wall. All right.
Awesome. Thank you.
That's awesome. You can just leave that there. I really like it.
It is, and it's.